I'd like to call this meeting of the Princeton City Council to order. Clear call roll.
Mayor Mavry.
Here.
Councilmember Newman.
Here.
Gomez.
Sir.
McCall.
Here.
McCransky.
Aye.
Would you please rise and join us in the pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the God who is with us. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we're going to go to public comment. We have the opportunity for public comment both in the beginning of the meeting as well as at the end. And you can speak both times. If anyone here would like to speak to the council. Bob, if you'd please come forward, and the mic is already on. You're good to go. It's a hot mic. Great for a thorough meeting. There we go. We're glad to have you.
You may not say that. Yeah, I think we're still live. Good evening, Bob Warren, I'm here in Princeton. I see we've made progress on the old J&amp;J property. Is there a status update on the Goodyear property?
No.
I understand that the deadline has come and gone for that person to do something. And I still see it's in the same state of affairs as it was.
The time has gone for the city to do something. That's why I was getting the court orders.
Okay. So that's the next step you presented. Do you want the judge to give you an order?
The judge already gave us an order.
Oh, okay, great.
That has expired.
That's not great.
No. It's currently between the two attorneys.
Oh, no, attorneys.
It's probably a dispoint.
Okay.
We're trying to make incremental progress here as quickly as we can.
Between the two. Let's turn it up.
I would like to say that it is a priority for all of us council members. We and Pete's working on it. So I would say that it's a challenge getting people to cooperate, and we're working on it. So Pete is on it. He's, I can see it.
I'm doing it. It's not a hundred percent of my work.
Well, I'm not going away. I'll be here for another three or four months, so.
All right. I'll be back. Hopefully, look me down before that.
I hope so.
Any other public comments, anyone?
Okay.
Seeing none, go ahead and approve the minutes for the regular council meeting, number five.
Move the way approved the minutes for our council meeting, September fifth, two thousand twenty-three.
We have a motion in a second. Clear call roll.
Councilmember Newman.
Aye.
Gomez.
Aye.
McCall.
Aye.
McCransky.
Aye.
Mayor Querem, uh, Mayor of Mavry.
Aye. Very good. Now we'll go to invoice, please, City Clerk Peter Nelson.
Okay. For this period, the Department of Council Finance, as we have invoices totaling two hundred and seventy-two thousand, one hundred and forty-two dollars and ninety-five cents. In the Department of Streets and Public Improvement, we have invoices totaling one hundred and eighty-four thousand, four hundred and fifty-four dollars and forty-one cents. In the Department of Public Safety, we have invoices totaling one hundred and fifty-one thousand, five hundred and fifty-nine dollars and twenty-one cents. And in the Department of Public Property and Utilities, we have invoices totaling eight hundred and ninety-three thousand, three hundred dollars and eighty-one cents. For a grand total of one million, five hundred and one thousand, four hundred and fifty-seven dollars and thirty-eight cents. Mayor, all council members present have confirmed their reviews of all invoices and now are submitted for disposition.
That's a lot of money. I move that we approve the invoices as presented.
We have a motion in a second. Is there any questions or comments from the council? Seeing none, clear call roll.
Councilmember Newman.
Aye.
Gomez.
Aye.
McCall.
Aye.
McCransky.
Aye.
Mayor Mavry.
Aye.
Next on the agenda is suspension of the requirement for a second reading for ordinance O dash twenty-three dash zero one four, authorizing the sale of Perry Plaza to Aruka Institute of Healing Incorporated for four hundred and forty thousand dollars. Mayor, all council members have considered this and they submitted for disposition.
I move that we suspend ordinance O dash two-three dash zero one four.
Okay, we have a motion to suspend that ordinance. Is there any questions?
Suspend the second.
Secondary, I'm sorry. Suspend secondary. Is there any questions or comments from the council? We'll talk about this at the next line down. Okay, seeing none, clear call roll.
Councilmember Newman.
Aye.
Gomez.
Yes.
McCall.
Aye.
McCransky.
Aye.
Mayor Mavry.
Aye.
Next on the agenda, hold on a second. Next on the agenda is ordinance O dash twenty-three dash O one four, authorizing the sale of Perry Plaza to Aruka Institute of Healing for four hundred and forty thousand dollars. Mayor, all council members have reviewed this ordinance and it is submitted for disposition.
I move that we approve ordinance O dash two-three dash zero one four.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. And what we're going to do, if you have any questions or comments, would like to pre-suggest this with us about this before we vote on it, please, Teresa.
Well, obviously, we're thrilled to have the opportunity to pass out this building to a very worthy organization itself. At this point, the four hundred and forty thousand, just reminders, is the eighty percent of the appraised value, which is what we're required to do. We've got the, I guess we'll say the contract details that we're finishing up on our end and with Aruka. But did anybody's got any comments or anything on the sale or questions? Feel free.
I'll just mention quickly that I talked with John Hidgson this morning. He had found some items that are really semantic in nature. They're not deal breakers. It's just, as we had emailed back and forth with Aruka, the current contract talks about only making principal payments where we're talking actually principal and interest. So the contract will be changed to include that. And the, I think that's basically, there were two lines that made reference to only principal payments, not interest. So that's about it.
Any additional comments, council members? I just would like to make a quick comment. So I appreciate, I appreciate that Teresa and Pete both have been working on this for a couple of months now. And it's been held in a very quiet manner. We're excited. After we vote on this, I'm going to ask Sarah Scruggs, who represents Aruka Institute of Healing, to speak for just a few moments at the podium. And again, we're looking forward to your comments there as well. So I want to say thank you to Teresa. Thank you for Pete for working on this. And I know that you had a number of showings over the years on this, showing this building. And we're excited that it's going to a great home. This is for women, for everybody. The city of Princeton is going to get four hundred and forty thousand back in the coffers. And it's going to be, it's a three-year contract sale, and we're getting interest on our money during those three years. So again, it's a prudent business decision. But again, more than that, it's a win for the community as a whole. So we'll go ahead now and we'll have clear call roll, please. I'm sorry, clear.
Well, actually, we didn't, did we?
We had a motion. The, all right. All right. Move for the actual order.
I move that we approve ordinance O dash two-three dash zero one four.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Clear call roll.
Councilmember Newman.
Aye.
Gomez.
Mr. Shane.
McCall.
Aye.
McCransky.
Aye.
Mayor Mavry.
Aye. Okay, and motion passes. Go ahead, Sarah, go ahead, please.
Thank you for having me. Good evening.
You got to talk about it.
All right, I'll try. I just want to say that I appreciate all of the hard work that Mayor Mavry and Pete and Teresa have put into this. I also appreciate the council approving the purchase. Our plans are to put approximately three million into the building to really give it a lot of purpose feel for Princeton. And as I spoke last council meeting, we really want to put in a lot of wonderful comprehensive mental health services that will serve the city and the surrounding communities for generations to come. So once again, I just wanted to thank you all for your hard work. And I'll be available for questions at any time. I can share my email address if anyone here is possible to have a helpful question for me. So thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. I think this deserves a round of applause. Very good. Now we're going to go to the city manager report. Teresa?
First, under my report, this is similar to what we did when the city received some ARCA funds from the county. We just need to do a receipt of acknowledgement from the ARCA funds builder, Lovejoy Homestead. They recently received four thousand dollars to be used towards a recovery from COVID from the county. So just acknowledgement in the that the money was received and I would pass that along to the county and a new sign before me as well, so. Also in your packet is your police and fire pension report. Both are caught up now for through July of two thousand twenty-three. Two bid comments down here on your report. First one. The first one is a bid for Park Lane sewer lining. This one, Chamblin recently just announced. Let me pull this up for you. I just have it. This is actually for, the project consists of nine hundred and sixty-two lineal feet of eight-inch sanitary sewer, cured-in-place pipe liner, which is approximately seventeen lateral service reconnections along with bypass pumping and other ancillary items. I tech terms there. Bidding shall be submitted no later than ten a.m. at the, here at City Hall, City Clerk's office on Tuesday of October third. So that's one of our bids, just as announcements for that one. And then we have, we're still have bids that we're taking for the electric storage building through September twenty-first at ten a.m. And both of those details can be found through our website and also being posted in the paper.
Anything else, Teresa? No. Very good. Okay, under Mayor's report, we need, we have an appointment. We have a vacancy under the Princeton Library Board, and I'd like to have a motion for appointment for Emily Cook to fill that position.
I move that we appoint Emily Cook to the Princeton Public Library Board.
We have a motion in a second. Is there any questions, comments for the council? Seeing none, clear call roll.
Councilmember Newman.
Aye.
Gomez.
Aye.
McCall.
Aye.
McCransky.
Aye.
Mayor Mavry.
Hi. Okay, now we're going to go to our segment of our council meeting called Positively Princeton. I'll step it on the podium for just a moment. So a couple of things with our evening of Positively Princeton. We've got a little bit of variety of things going on tonight, and we're going to discuss some things here about what I call a small victories. But we're going to start out tonight with Lex Toffins, the Director of the Princeton, or Bureau County Historical Society is going to speak to us about what's going on here with an event coming up. Please, Lex. Absolutely. Please.
Thank you, Mayor Mavry. Good evening, council members, Chief Cammer, Teresa and Pete. Bottom of the bat, I want to extend an invitation to the city council and all the residents of Princeton to the unveiling of our new Civil War monument. That will be in front of the Sash Selter Matson Building, formerly known as the Matson Public Library. That will be at eleven o'clock this Friday, September twenty-second. Hope you'll all join us. To that end, among our speakers will be our mayor, Mayor Mavry State. Representative Ryan Spain will be our keynote speaker. We also have an amazing soprano coming, Carrie Anne Otanjo. She'll be performing the National Anthem and the Battle of the Republic all a cappella. So should be awesome. I also learned this past Friday that Representative Darren LaFoud will be reading the event and the names of the soldiers into the Congressional Record in Washington, D.C. this Thursday. So Princeton will be in national news. Mostly, as Executive Director of the Historical Society, I'm here to say thank you to the city of Princeton for your support. And on this project, our new sidewalks look amazing. They're nearly complete. All that's left to do is the disabled ramps. The Bureau County Historical Society would like to thank Mayor Mavry, Teresa Bittner, Chief Cammer, Quinn Querem for all of their collective help on that. And of course, our tourism director, Tori Yepsen. Anyway, I hope you all join us this Friday. If there were ever anything to be proud about this city, it's our veterans. They give and give and give and give. So please come out and support them as well. Thank you very much.
What time was that?
Eleven hundred.
Eleven hundred, yes.
Yeah, looking forward to it. Tori Yepsen, our tourism director, is going to speak to us this evening, give us a quick update of what's going on. And I know you were on WGN Radio, so I'm excited to hear you talk about that.
Hi, everyone. Yes, I was just on WGN Radio on Thursday. It was an incredible experience. Our offices are beautiful. It was a very, very, very quick ten-minute segment on air, and I kind of like don't even remember what I said. But it was, it was an amazing exposure for Princeton. With that opportunity, we'll have commercials ran for this next month, and we have a contest giveaway that will live on their website. So we're promoting some businesses in our town as well. And I definitely think it was a great opportunity, and I plan to invest more with that audience with WGN, which was great, so. I wanted to invite, I have some flyers for our Oktoberfest event. It's kind of our goodbye to summer at Rotary Park, our last street concert of the season. We'll have, the vendors will all be getting in the spirit of Oktoberfest, serving German fare, drinks. And we are hosting some fun competitions. We're in need of some teams for the bed race competition. Whoever wants to take on the firemen, they're building, they have, we have a team. So we need someone to go up against them. So anyone, if you know anyone who's interested in that, I think it'll be really fun. We have some trophies in the making for that. So that, and then also October first, our, I have some save the dates here that you guys can take on your way out. We're excited to welcome back the Infinity Group. They have a Transiberian Orchestra tribute band. So we will be hosting a night of Transiberian Orchestra at the Princeton High School on December fifteenth. And tickets will go on sale October first. And you can follow the Q R code there. Have you seen anything coming up? We have a lot of fun fall stuff in the works, too. Jennifer, right? The witches' night out, the Halloween parade. That's all the second weekend of October, Scarecrow Fest, all fun and weekend, that's, that's, that's second weekend of October. Thank you.
Good point. Is it WGN, is it for TV or radio?
Radio.
Radio, thank you.
Yes, it's part of.
John Williams, is that right?
Yes, it's part of Midwest's best segment that John Williams does.
Okay.
So you can look that up online, too.
Yes, I can do that. Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, Victoria. Okay, now we have a young man that's working on an upcoming food drive, and he is seen walking around Princeton not aimlessly. He has a postal route. So this evening, we have Hunter Rada, and he's been with the postal service for seven years, but he's excited about a food drive he's got coming up at the end of the month. Hunter, glad to have you.
Hi, so I'm part of a, I'm Hunter. You might, some of you might recognize me because I know I'm some of your mailman. So I'm part of a, on the weekends, I dress up like a nerd, and I go out and I hit my friends with home swords. It's a live-action role-playing game called Amp Guard. And every September, we're an international group, we run a big food drive called Food Fight. And for the last, let's say, last year was our, it was the Illinois chapter's first year doing it. I'm sorry, I ran that. And for Illinois food, for Illinois like local food pantries, we raise around three thousand dollars and I think five hundred pounds of food. And just locally, we raised three hundred and ten dollars and two hundred and seventy-five pounds just for here in Bureau County. And that was, that was with, working with Nick at the Beryl Society. And this year, we're wanting to do that again. So on the twenty-ninth, we're having a big food drive at the Beryl Society. I'll be there all day. I'm sure you can come see, I'll be, I'll have a big feathered hat, and I'll be dressed, I'm saying, to the nines in my normal stuff you'll see me on Sundays in. And I'll be out there Friday the twenty-ninth, where my goal, I want to try and raise, I wonder if I want to double money, at least the monetary that we raised, I'm hoping to earn about six hundred. Because for local food, local food pantries, one dollar there is worth ten dollars of buying power. So it's always better if you're donating to, something local people don't know, if you're donating to a food pantry, cash is king, because they can, a dollar goes a lot farther for them. And I'm hoping to help feed local families.
Very good. Thank you, Hunter. It doesn't, I won't do justice to talk about the homestead festival, how tremendous it was. I mean, people told me that it was probably the best homestead festival they've seen in a long time, and that doesn't discount the previous ones. But the idea of incorporating the balloon rides was very, oh, cutting edge and in some ways risky, because you're taking the audience now from Main Street and having them travel over to the Missouri Park. But I visited just briefly with Sue Stutske this afternoon and just got some statistics. They had over a thousand tethered balloon rides, and those were fifteen dollars apiece. So it was a nice price point for families to be able to afford to do that. They had seventy-five volunteers that participated in helping just with the balloon rides for a couple of days. And I think Teresa, you were there as volunteer, and your son is.
Friday and Saturday.
That's great. And they said that out of those seventy-five people, a lot of them were students from Princeton High School, as well as from Bureau Valley High School. So it was a community effort, a county effort. The fifty-fifty drawing had reached an all-time high. It broke a record. It was over twenty-five thousand dollars, and that was split, and a local gentleman won that. A big thank you to the Park District. Teresa worked very closely with the Park District, so the city's assets, the Park District's assets were utilized. Tammy Lang, we want to say thank you to her. We want to say thank you to her board and then her staff that pulled that all off. We also wanted to mention that the parking, think of the logistics of getting all those people into the park and then back out of the park, and then you're dealing with nightfall and things like that where it's dark and challenging to get vehicles out. So I want to say thank you to Tom Cammer. And Tom, you had a number of different organizations that participated in that. And if you could help me out, was it Adam Lynn from the Bureau of County? What is this guy?
Emergency Management Association. He helped out with the logistics and making up a plan for all of us to be organized in doing this, so.
So is the Police Department, the Princeton Explorers?
Yes, Fire Department, Queens Guys, Street Streets, everybody was involved in that.
Very good. Well, that was super, getting people in and out of that. And you know, if you, I think everybody's probably in this room went and experienced that whole thing, that it was just so intriguing, the bounce houses, for example. There was like five or six bouncy houses, and I didn't know we had that many kids in Bureau County. There was, I mean, it looked like a children's, these kids running around. I mean, it's in all sincerity, there was kids everywhere, and they were having fun. So a tremendous weekend, just tremendous. A lot of people that we don't get a chance to specifically thank, but we, the three lead couples, we certainly appreciate their efforts. We appreciate the two main people that run it from year to year, and that would be Rick Clary, and we also have Rachel Skaggs that is involved in there, right there in the ticket things for the planning. We appreciate that. In the coming year, our own Victoria Yepsen is going to be helping out and manning the main helm of that whole thing. And she's got a year to tutor underneath some great people, and we know you're going to be successful with that, Victoria, and we know you will. So very exciting weekend last, a week ago. See, the other thing I want to just wrap up and say is, I mentioned early on that I sometimes blew up my life on small victories, and it's not a negative way to say that. I just, I just enjoy incremental things. And one of the things that we, the council, I appreciate their ability to allow me to do this, we want, we have partial ownership in the City-County Park, hence the name City-County Park. And it's a strange thing, we actually own a section of land out there, deeded to us as a city, and then the Park District has another section. And so I've always been concerned about leaving the City-County Park. When you get ready to pull out of there, it's, and I don't think it's an age thing, I think it's been that way for years, I've been worried. So you pull up to go, pull out of there on Route twenty-six, and you look to the left, and that's not an issue, but you look to the right, and sometimes I roll down my window just to listen. And so then you look right, look right, look right, and then you pull out and gun it, and you look in the rearview mirror to see if you got a Mack truck looking at you. And so one of the things that I was able to do on the council, I appreciate this work, we had Chamblin and Associates do a quick little field study and talked about sightlines and how to the north that it's not enough sightline. So the state of Illinois would never allow that today, but it's been basically grandfathered in. So a letter was composed by Chamblin to go to IDOT in Ottawa, and I received a copy of that back, and I'm going to give each council member and Teresa a copy of this. And basically, our letter to them was, that we were, says, Dear Mr. Ahmad, he's the chief engineer over there. We have a traffic safety concern we would like to bring to your attention. The site distance for drivers exiting City-County Park onto Illinois Route twenty-six north of Princeton is limited. The city's engineering consultant, Chamblin Associates, has investigated the situation and prepared the enclosed report detailing the issue. Chamblin notes the preferred option would be to relocate the entrance. However, that improvement cannot be accomplished quickly due to land acquisition and funding issues. Therefore, we request IDOT erect advanced warning signs with flashers north of the entrance to alert southbound traffic. Should you have any questions or any clarifications, please feel free to contact me. And then that was sent to the engineer, and he sent back a report or a response fairly quickly. This came actually, it was dated August thirty-first. And basically what it says is, I don't want to read this yet, but again, we gained a little bit on this. Dear Mayor Mavry, thank you for your correspondence dated August twenty-first regarding the sight distance concern of the intersection of Illinois Route twenty-six and the City-County Park entrance. The department has reviewed the accident data on file for this location from two thousand eighteen to two thousand twenty-three. Of the reported accidents, none involved vehicles leaving the park with vehicles traveling south on Route twenty-six. So unfortunately, there's been no accidents, just Iowa's calls, takes close calls. But the good news is that they are going to make some changes. It does say here, the department inspected the site and will direct the area maintenance team section to trim trees along the east side of the highway north of the entrance. Additionally, the southbound park entrance sign will be moved to a location that provides motorists better warning of the park entrance traffic ahead. And then it just goes on, say, better utilize available safety funds. The department only sells flashing lights at intersections where the number of accidents is higher than the statewide average for similar intersections. The crash rate at this location is well below the statewide average. Therefore, we are unable to justify the installation and maintenance of flashing lights above the park entrance warning sign at this location. However, the department will continue to monitor this location for any future safety improvements. Thank you for the opportunity. So we gained a little bit, and I am hoping that in my term, in the next three and a half years, maybe we can look at a long-term solution for that. Because I just feel like it's a safety concern that still bothers me to this day, and I have people bring that up to me. So we're going to, we're going to keep working on that. So we have, we have a little bit of gain on that whole project. So that wraps up my Positively Princeton. Appreciate everyone here adding to the, to this section. I'm going to move back to our regular scheduled programs, if you say.
Can I say something?
Yes, absolutely.
First, I'd say that everybody was aware that we had our flag speed event, not in the wrong way, this Saturday. I want personally to congratulate from the committee and the veterans for all of us who attended. It was a very successful event, even with the rain. So thank you very much for supporting this great cause and to keep the flags flying. Thank you.
Thank you, Hector, appreciate that. Any other council members with any? Very good. Now we'll go to old businesses, any old businesses this evening? Any new businesses this evening? Is there any additional public comment? Okay, Bob Warren, come up for round two. We're glad to have you, Bob. It's easy to say, but please change it, Sarah.
Speaking of police, place and fire pension funds, can you tell me what percentage of that's funded?
Both of them are close to between sixty and seventy.
Sixty and seventy. Compared to IMRF?
Um, well, obviously not as well funded, but within the timeframe of having those fully funded, we're actually doing very well.
And what is the longevity of the fund that will cease today? How long would that fund last for the police and fire pensions? We used to get a report way back when, they said it would last eight, nine years beyond.
Now it's a combined fund, it's with the state combined fund, so it'd be a little bit harder to give you that direct answer, but I can get it to you.
Okay.
If you want that.
Appreciate that, yeah.
You want a tenure, or what did you?
Well, we used to get a report from the treasurer that had X amount of dollars in there, and we had X. and we had X amount of pensioners and projected pensioners, and we knew that that fund was gonna last X amount of years.
Okay.
If that makes sense, does that make sense?
Absolutely.
Raise it, and they're like, what are you talking about? Remember those days, right?
I wish I was part of I M R F. I think it's a great program, so, yeah.
It is a great program, yes. It's, it's unfortunate that all of our pension isn't I M R F. It is what it is. Thank you very much.
I'll, I'll get that, too.
Okay, thanks.
Any additional public comment? Okay, before I go on to, and, and request adjournment, I'd like to explain that, um, there's times that we adjourn and go into executive session, and it's an opportunity for the council to speak on issues that are of a sensitive nature or, or nature that require us to go back and discuss things, and tonight, we're gonna be discussing a couple of, of issues in, in all a positive way, but, uh, we won't be coming back out and taking the action tonight, so if you stick around, you know, there's gonna be no further action from the council, uh, and if there's anything that we decide to do, it'll be, uh, hopefully on the next, uh, council meeting coming up in, uh, October. Very good. Okay, Sarah, if you would.
I move that we adjourn our regular meeting this evening and convene an executive session under Illinois statutes to discuss issues regarding, uh, employment. Also, under Illinois statutes, we're going to discuss the sale or lease of property owned by the public body. The next regular meeting of the city council will be held Monday, October second, two thousand twenty-three, six to five at City Hall.
Okay, we have a motion in second, third call, roll.
Councilmember Newman.
Aye.
Gomez.
Aye.
McCall.
Aye.
McCransky.
Aye.
Mayor Mayberry.
Aye.
It's me, and you, sir, thank you for attending. Thank you.